Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor John Seale, Spring Hill Avenue United Methodist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, as united leaders and called prophets of old, lead us today to support and recognize our leaders, men and women who love your people and can walk with them, who feel their pain and share their joys, who dream their dreams and strive to accompany them to their common goal. In your fire, with your Spirit, embolden and commission us to serve your children, to serve your people, and to bring real glory to your name, Almighty God, through Jesus Christ, by the power of the Holy Spirit, we pray this today. And today, as the children of God, let us all pray the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespassed against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thou is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Let my little allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would please, remain standing for a moment of silent prayer. In honor of Mr. Charles Wood and his family, Mr. Wood was ninety-eight years old. He is, or was, a World War II veteran and retiree from government work, and he passed away this past Friday, July thirteenth. Mr. Wood served his country during World War II as a corporal in the Army Air Force, and he was honorably discharged and worked at Brookley Army Airfield in electronics for many years after that, but was later transferred to Kelly Air Force Base in San Antonio, Texas during the sixties. He and his wife Mary moved back to Mobile in the seventies as retirees. Then they immediately began working with special needs citizens and drove the establishment of the Mobile Association for Retarded Citizens, or M.A.R.C., as we know it. Mary and Charles were among those who started M.A.R.C. and other nonprofit organizations. They dedicated their lives to the group homes built for special needs citizens, and their son Bill still lives in one of those homes today. Mr. Wood served in many capacities, as President, Vice President, and Secretary of the State of Alabama for special needs citizens, and he was appointed to serve, was appointed as governor in the state to serve where he had an office in Montgomery. During the eighties and nineties, Mr. Wood had a vision of developing the Japanese gardens in West Mobile. He was working with his counterparts in Japan, and a plan was put together to develop a fourteen-acre fish hatchery into a serene and peaceful garden. And many of us in this room have visited the Japanese gardens over the years. Mr. Wood worked daily planting and building structures while tirelessly fundraising for the gardens. And he frequently told friends, including me, that working toward the goal of the Japanese gardens kept him young, and that you never get old until you're tired of being young, like that. Many a time, I would go out to the gardens to visit with Mr. Wood, and he would be out there in his mid-nineties with a chainsaw, by himself, chainsawing, sawing whatever, however you call it, because I don't work with a chainsaw, but anyway, taking limbs off of trees, going up ladders, and working on the Japanese gardens by himself. He was an amazing man. In 2016, Mr. Wood received the Imperial Confirmant of the Order of the Rising Sun, gold and silver raised by the government of Japan for his contribution to promoting Japanese culture and understanding of Japan in the United States, in his establishment of the Charles Wood Japanese Gardens. Mr. Wood was a southern gentleman. He was a devoted husband and loving parent. He was a patriot, artist, visionary, and Mr. Wood was preceded in death by his loving Wood Mary fairly recently. They were married for seventy-nine years. I know, unreal. Visitation will be tomorrow at Radney on Dolphin at nine o'clock, and then the funeral service will be at ten at Pine Crest over in Foley. And they're asking that in lieu of flowers, donations can be made to the Mobile Association for Retarded Citizens. So if you will, in your own way, a silent moment of prayer for the family of Mr. Wood and in honor of this wonderful gentleman. Thank you very much.
Roll call, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilman Richardson. Councilman Small. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Daze.
Here.
Councilwoman Rich.
Here.
Councilwoman Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning. We ask that you turn off all electronic devices before or upon entering a meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 p.m. on the Thursday preceding the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to speak. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired, and we kindly ask that you don't request more time. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to speak. To maintain the quorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed during the course of this meeting. Thank you again for coming and your interest in municipal government.
Approval of minutes of July tenth. So moved.
Second.
Proper motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minus approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
Nothing here, Mr. Vice President.
Adoption of the agenda. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Proper motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen's adopt.
Appeals. We have appeal of Lance and Ellen Lynch concerning the Architectural Review Board's denial of the application to alter the property at eleven-ten Palmetto Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the course of this appeal?
Is the appeal here?
Right.
They may have just met with-
Is Mr. Lance or Ms. Ellen Lynch here?
That's odd. They may have just gone back home.
Yeah.
Staff?
Okay.
Do we know that they received notification? Have anybody corresponded?
Yes, they did.
So we have heard back from them, that they had received a notification?
I didn't hear back that they received it, but they were notified.
Didn't they make the applications for the appeal?
Yes.
So they should be aware.
Yes.
Do we need to hear from staff or someone from the-
No, that's an appeal that's not here.
The appeal's not here.
We'll notify him by email.
Okay.
You know, just out of difference to maybe the schedules or the calendar reading wrong, I just wouldn't see-
Somebody making an appeal.
Someone making an appeal, being that interested to go forward with an appeal process and then not show up. And, yeah, this is in District Two as well, eleven-ten Palmetto. Do we have a way of reaching out to them? Madam Attorney, can we hold this over? Just to get some- I would hate to make such a drastic change, a drastic difference in this property and not know what their intent is.
Unless something's been worked out, we're not familiar with.
Staff is here to address the appeal. If you would like additional information, anything to supplement what you received with the agenda. Paige Lark is here on behalf of the Architectural Review Board, if you would like her to explain-
Let's do that while we find out what may be going on.
The applicant applied on May eighteenth of this year.
Can we get your name and your position?
Oh, sorry. It's Paige Lark with Historic Development.
Okay.
He applied on May eighteenth in 2018. The meeting was held on June sixth this past year. I had been in touch with the applicant since July of 2017, when he first approached me about applying to the ARB for an extension of his porch. At that time, I notified him of the process of our guidelines and how staff recommends based on our guidelines. Our recommendation from staff was for denial of this application. It's very unique in the sense that it's a half-width porch.
It's a half, what now?
Half-width porch. So instead of the porch going across the whole facade, it only extends to the half, which is something that you really don't see. It's a unique feature. Also, it's a primary elevation. Alteration of original porch features is discouraged against. It was on the nineteen-twenty-five Sandstone Insurance map of having that half-width porch. So extending it would kind of make a feature be there that never existed. So it would lose a lot of its historic integrity. That's why staff recommended denial, and the board upheld. They approved for denial.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they attend the June sixth meeting?
They did not. They were notified, and they did not attend. I sent notification via email, and we also put the sign out. And then when I wrote the letter of decision from the board, I sent it certified mail and also via email.
They made their application on June eighteenth, not May, because the meeting was June sixth, so they-
They made the app, well, to the ARB, they made it on May of eighteen.
Our letter is dated the sixth, I mean, June, so just wanted to get the calendar right.
Yeah, no, they applied for approval, and it appeared before the board on June sixth.
And they knew about the hearing on the sixth, and that it would probably not go in their favor, is what they were-
They get a staff report the week before we issue one. We also, that's when we put up a sign.
So they would have known what the disposition is, and they did not show up for that hearing. Thank you.
Again, they did not show up for the hearing in front of the Architectural Review Board.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what she said.
The number that, the phone number is a nine-zero-eight area code, so they may not be local.
They had recently purchased the property. I believe they purchased it in July of last year, so they may not have changed their number over.
Oh, yeah.
I'm looking at a photograph of the building, and, as you say, it has a half porch. How exactly did they want to extend the porch?
There, in your packet, there stood, so the drawings that they submitted. They wanted to extend it the full width and then also change out the columns from the turn post to a square box column.
And they are using a contractor that has done rehabilitation?
Yes, he actually, he applied for a banner and shield for one of the homes that he did in the Oakley neighborhood, same neighborhood.
And the examples that they showed of homes that have the full porch, those are different years that they were created, so to speak.
And also different, built, different features.
Has this request on someone else's property also been denied, to your knowledge?
We have had people come in interested in changing up their porch. We've never had one that wanted to extend from a half width to a full width. We've had people that have, did not have porches currently on, but that wanted to add either a balcony or a porch. And we do research. We look at the Sandstone maps to see if any kind of umbrage like that would have existed before, before we typically either recommend or bring it for the board.
Have you denied others?
Not specifically like this, a half width.
But with a porch type?
Not while I have been here, but I know there have been before.
Okay, thank you.
Well, isn't that here?
He just sent a message that, he's in the Coast Guard, and he is regrettably headed out, I guess, to do his Coast Guard, yeah, work.
Should we hold it up at least here?
And he could not attend the meeting today.
Yeah, I would be okay with that.
Do we need a date or just, because we don't know how long it will take him to come back from his-
Is his wife in the Coast Guard as well?
Didn't I say?
Yeah, it's not like it's something falling apart.
Lisa, can you check with him and find out when he or his wife might be back in town, so that we can set a date?
Yeah, I agree. So-
We're gonna hold it over a couple of weeks, and in the interim, we'll be able to find out some specifics.
Thirty-first.
I'll make a motion to postpone to the thirty-first.
Second.
Proper motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Please let him know.
We have requests for ways of noise ordinance on July twenty-fifth in Cooper Riverside Park, August fourth in Langin Park, August eighteenth in Langin Municipal Park, and July thirty-first at the St. Cathedral.
So moved. Second.
Proper motion is second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing today is a public hearing to rezone property at four-fifty-one and four-fifty-seven Dolphin Island Parkway, nineteen-sixty-five and nineteen-sixty-seven Antoine Street, and nineteen-sixty-eight Duncan Street, southeast corner of Dolphin Island Parkway and Antoine Street, extending to the north side of Duncan Street, one hundred and fifty feet east of Dolphin Island Parkway, from R-one, B-one, and B-three to B-three.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this particular public hearing? If you would come down and give us your name and your address.
I'm Dennis MacLeod. Address is fourteen-twenty Regency Oaks Tribe West. This is my agent. He'll speak for me.
Tim Spafford, twelve-sixty-three Lake Circle West. I'm the architect on the project. Don't, if you have any questions.
Well, if you could give us some information about, you know, what the plan is.
Okay, the Coast Safe and Lock business is located on this property, and they, the business has expanded over the years, and they ended up buying the property next to them and behind them. So we're rezoning and resubdividing the property into one, and we've had a PUD approved, and the rezoning and resubdivision was handled by bird surveying. So just trying to clean things up, you know, record-wise.
Anything else you all would like to offer? Anyone else that would like to speak on this particular public hearing? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to determine the structures at three-thirteen Lincoln Boulevard, five-fifty Cedar Avenue, five-seventy-two Westwood Street, five-seventy-three Westwood Street, six-twenty-one Dr. Thomas Avenue North, also known as six-eleven Stemrod Street, Stemrod Road, seven-twelve Johnston Avenue, ten-twelve New St. Francis, I'm, I'm skipping that one, sorry, six-oh-seven Rickaby Street, of public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is anyone here that'd like to speak on any of these properties during this public hearing? Yes, sir. Mr. Dawkins?
And I believe it may, I'm sorry, David Dawkins, Deputy Director, Municipal Enforcement. I didn't catch if ten-twelve New St. Francis was called out, but I do have a comment and update on that particular property.
Okay. So it was everyone but this, but that particular property. Again, anyone that'd like to speak during the public hearings for the addresses called? If not, those public hearings are closed.
Public hearing to determine the structure at ten-twelve St. Francis Street is a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Mr. Dawkins?
Just briefly, the owner of the property met this morning with the Community Housing Development and is in process of making an application for grant assistance to stabilize the building. So we'd request at least a minimum of two-week holdover to see if she qualifies for that grant.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on this particular public hearing?
I want to clarify something. We are, we are once gonna go ahead and order it demolished and, oh, excuse me, order it to be repaired, to declare the nuisance and order it repaired. So we have changed from that position and now simply want to delay the vote, postpone the vote for two weeks. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
The two-week holdover would give the applicant a chance to find out if she's qualified for grant assistance through Community Housing Development. However, if council would like to go forward and vote to stabilize and repair, you have that option today, and we will move forward as such.
But we're taking the demolition off the table.
That's my understanding of what the motion would be.
Oh, but no, in pre-council meeting, we said that we were gonna delay the vote so that the language would be very clear on what our intent would be when it came on the agenda, table.
The resolution before you has language about demolition. When it comes up again, it needs to have language about-
Repair.
Repair.
So we can table it today, and then next week, put it on the agenda for repair nuisance and-
In two weeks, we can update the application to show repair instead of demolition. We can do that. Upload another-
Just table it now.
That works.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Move to table.
Second.
Proper motion is second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's public hearing.
No, just a public hearing. We're just closing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
It's just a public hearing. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this particular public hearing?
We'll vote on that in a minute.
Okay. That public hearing is closed.
I apologize.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Don Camo.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Don Camo, three-two-four-five-eight Wildflower Trail, Spanish Fort. I'm the acting executive director with the Gulf Coast Explorium. Good morning.
Good morning.
Have some news I wanted to share with the city council I've been kind of holding on to for a little while. But in celebration of our thirty-fifth anniversary and twenty years in downtown Mobile, we've decided to return to international blockbuster exhibits the spring of 2019. We realize that part of our role and value in bringing world-class exhibitions to the Gulf Coast region, and we remembered that, you know, Mike Sullivan did this quite often, for those who remembered who he was. He was the executor, executive director for the Explorium for ten years. He recently passed. He brought us things like Dead Sea Scrolls, Pompeii, which they helped develop, and China. And it's in his tradition that we're honored to say that we are bringing Genghis Khan from Mongolia to the Gulf Coast Explorium into the Mobile area. This exhibit has brought in over a million visitors, both internationally and nationally, has over three-hundred-and-fifty artifacts, daily performances from Mongolian artists, dancers, musicians. You'll learn stories about Mongolia, see the treasures, explore the culture, the conquest, and the heritage of Genghis Khan's thirteenth-century Mongolian empire. This is gonna be the first installment of our return to international exhibits. We are building on the legacy of successful exhibits such as China with Seven Thousand Years of Innovation, which had over one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand visitors, the Dead Sea Scrolls with over two-hundred-and-five thousand visitors, and Pompeii with over one-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. We realize that these exhibits serve the community in all its diversity by offering world-class, unique educational experiences with broad public appeal and contribute to the area's tourism and economic prosperity by attracting visitors from throughout the southeast. So I've come today to ask the city council for two things, two favors. The first is that I have met with the mayor, and we have asked the city to be the title sponsor for this exhibit. I would appreciate any support that you can put towards this request to help us out with that. The second is that you might consider designating a portion of your discretionary funding to this international exhibit as well. We are expecting between one-hundred-and-twenty to one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand visitors, fifty-one percent coming from outside of the state of Alabama. We are marketing from Jacksonville, Florida, all the way to New Orleans, all the way up to Birmingham. This exhibit has never been anywhere near the Gulf Coast region. It is presently at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library. It has recently got back from Indonesia. It is heading to Kazakhstan in between before it comes to us. It's been all over the world. We have not brought an exhibit of this size in quite some time, so we're excited about it. With me, I also have packets for each of you that talks about the exhibit. It also talks about what we're doing this fall. We are doing three in-house exhibits, so we will not be renting an external exhibit. We're building our own for the next three this fall that are gonna change things up and make it exciting. And at the same time, it'll give us a chance to raise money to bring in this huge international exhibit. I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. No, thank you.
Andrea Brown or Sharia Chambers?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sharia Chambers, thirty-six-hundred Michael Boulevard, one-four-one. I'm here on behalf of Mobile Parks and Recs Track and Field Department. Kids have worked very hard this year. We went to Anniston, Alabama for district, regional for Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and I'm with Greensboro, North Carolina. Kids got so many medals, we're just asking, you know, for any help to get these kids, you know, to North Carolina and pursue their dreams.
Good morning. Vernon at McNeil, nine-five-eight Palmetto Street. I'm here on behalf of Mobile Parks and Recs Track and Field. This elite set of children, a small sample of the over two-hundred children that participated with us at Mobile Parks and Recs under Coach Hickman. These children have not only worked for two-and-a-half hours since March until now, five days a week at Murphy High School, rain, snow, sleet, or hail, no lightning. They have not only worked hard, but they have captured over, over a hundred medals. In Trosville, Alabama, which is the state Parks and Recs annual meet, it's every May, and we go. Mobile Parks and Rec outshines Greenville, Connecticut County, Birmingham. It's, you can check it out. We outshine everybody. We got thirty gold medals, ten silver medals, and ten bronze medals. When they see Mobile Parks and Recs, they know we mean it business. These children are the only track and field club in Mobile that represent the city of Mobile. So they are all from all districts. You don't have to do anything but show up and work hard. When we traveled with USATF Track and Fields, what we traveled with, that is the, and it's a nationally recognized, over, you know, years old, but we have an association meet, which was in Anniston, Alabama, for two days. And all these parents and children travel and pay for hotels and food. On that meet, we took sixty-five, sixty-six qualifiers, and to qualify, you have to maintain a certain number, speed, or distance. Of those sixty-six, we had twenty-two gold medals, nineteen silver medals, and fifteen bronze medals. So of that number, fifty-seven of those children beat everybody in the state of Alabama to go to the regionals, which was held in Murfreesboro, which is outside of Nashville, Tennessee. Of those fifty-seven children that we took, twenty-five qualified for nationals. We had eight gold medals, eight silver medals, and twelve bronze medals. Our children are competing at the national level in North Carolina next weekend, two weekends away. And we have twenty-five children that have qualified nationally, and they will, every state will be represented, but these will be the only children that will have the city of Mobile on their chest. And we are asking if any funds be available to help us with a five-day stay, travel, any amount of help we can get. The city, City Parks and Recs has helped us with transportation, but as you can imagine, working parents, busy children, but the, what they, what they do every day is just mind-blowing. It is beyond anything that I've seen children do. No disciplinary problems. You only see these children on the news in the great light. All of them work very hard. Their coaches have them very disciplined. When they get there at five o'clock, you just ride by Murphy. The first thing you're gonna see is each child get out of the car and do two laps. Unchallenged, untold, undirected. They know the drill, and they work hard. And everybody there, parents included, are extremely proud- And everybody there, parents included, are extremely proud, but everybody just, we need some help to get the kids there. Represent the city of Mobile.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Are you, are you saying that the Parks and Recreation Department?
Has helped us with transportation.
And so if the council was to send funds or individual council members?
That would be for housing.
Go to the Parks and Recreation Department and they would then filter?
Is that how? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to get that clear.
Yes, ma'am. That is my understanding, yes. And what happens is we are there from 8 to 8 o'clock at night. And this is for five days. I've done it for two days. I'm not that brave to do five yet. But on those two days, you know, there is water and juice and fruit that the parents have all volunteered to supply, that every child, whether their parent is there or not, is tended to. And I would leave my child with this group of people anytime and they are absolutely wonderful and they work hard with the children.
This is great. This is, I'm excited to hear. I did not know of the level of participation with this particular sporting event. Why don't you all stand? Let's give them a big round of applause.
And I wanted to add that the children are ages four up to 18. So we have four and five-year-olds that compete and these records you can find or they're documented. The city of Mobile is documented for having these athletes.
And how many children?
We have 25 children that qualify to go to nationals.
And you qualify by getting?
You have to be in the top five. You have to be in the top five, right? And our regional meet was Tennessee, Mississippi, Louisiana and Alabama. So our children outshined all four of those states.
And this is a national?
And this will be nationals where we're hoping to get.
All over the country?
All over the country, yes, ma'am.
And what is the date of your event?
We will be 23rd, then come back on 29th.
July 23rd, 29th. And you can, you can look up the records and the athletes. USATF, USATF.
And we can help by giving money to Parks and Recs.
Parks and Recs, and anybody who doesn't have that kind of money at Fussackley's on Dolphin Street tonight from 6 to 8, any proceeds will benefit the children. We will get a percent of that, of their winning, of their earnings tonight. 6 to 8 tonight at Fussackley's on Dolphin Street. So we, they are, they are helping us out and whatever proceeds they, we'll get a percent of that. So if everybody could go there tonight, we'd appreciate it.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I think I'll give them about $1,000.
Oh, give them a $1,000 donation. And let me say, we represent every district. We are the only.
And I challenge all my colleagues to follow me and give me that same $1,000.
Yes, because this is the only place that you can go, all ages, all districts and work together.
That is wonderful. Y'all keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Now, when y'all go to nationals and win.
We will bring the medals back. We would be glad to bring, you see the flag?
Come back with your medals.
We will, we will do that. We will do that.
I'm sure everybody will do the best they can and we are really proud of all that you all are doing. Keep up the best, keep up the good work. All right.
Thank you much.
Great day. Sharia Shaw Lovett, 4050 Cottage Hill Road, here representing the pledge group of Mobile, getting ready for an exciting event. Area-wide strength-to-divide gathering will be July the 24th there at the Mobile Civic Center. The doors will open at 6:00 and the event will start at 6:30. I'm sure you have, hopefully you have read your emails and letters from the pledge group inviting our city council members to this event. And we are saying it's time, it's past time. This strength-to-divide gathering sponsored by the pledge group of Mobile will feature two nationally known speakers, Dr. John Perkins and Dr. Russell Moore. Dr. Perkins is the 87-year-old dean of Christian racial reconciliation in the U.S. with a heartfelt message of forgiveness and love. Dr. Russell Moore is a national head of ethics and religious liberty for the Southern Baptist Convention. We are so excited that these two speakers have agreed to come and be with us. They was just in Tennessee in April at the Martin Luther King 50 Year Celebration and we decided to bring them here for a gathering for racial consideration. We hope you will get the news out to your constituents. This pledge group is made up of pastors and leaders in the city of Mobile and in this region to come together, first of all, as the body of Christ, and deal with this racial divide. And we wanted to officially invite our city council members. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for the invitation.
100%.
Thank you. We thank, well, for one of our pastors, that's what was able to be with us today, Pastor Barbara York.
Good morning.
Thank you. God bless all of you.
Mr. Vice President, if I could, I would just like to commend Ms. Lovett, not only for this, but for all the activities she's engaged in to help heal the divide within our community on a number of different fronts. She's always out there. She's got her finger in a lot of pies and she gives very freely of her personal time and effort to improve our community. I very much appreciate it, Ms. Lovett.
Thank you, Councilman Days. We love you. To God be the glory.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Irene Anton, 2202 Clinton Street. I'm here to talk about First Litter and the litter that I was talking about, the administrative group, I can't call his name. He have a kayak going down, do 10 litter trips for this creek. We have infrastructure where we need more people to work and pay them salary, meaning the people that pick up the trash. Behind my house is a closed thoroughfare. It was going to be open, but a lady bought property down the street so they can't have a street going behind my house. Mr. Bill Haskin is no longer here, so eventually I was able to talk with the new person and they got, they came out and cleared the trash behind my house in bags, but they need to cut the grass and they need to bring something to lift the metal. Now, people have not been doing that prior to now, but they are just putting ties and everything else behind there. So we need to do the structure in the city with trash people. And we know that we are off schedule because we don't have enough people employed now. We need some more people employed. And I know that you all are going to do it when you get a chance because you had a meeting about that. In addition to that, I want to talk about the civic center shortly. They was going to close it. I hope they don't close it now because I understand we had ice thing by Coopers Park and it rained on it. In Montgomery, they still have their ice in their mall where people be doing whatever they do on the ice tracks. Okay, I understand, I don't know for sure, that the ice, the things under the civic center is still there because we had this Mickey Mouse thing on it. We had all those things on it. So if we check on that and see, we won't be closing the civic center because in the beginning, you was going to close the civic center and I hope that you don't. And the next thing on my agenda, closing Lad Stadium. We close, how we feel, because the police department marched, worked out there and they had to have somewhere to put the horses. And I agree with that. But disagreement now, I leave that for somebody else to speak on Lad Stadium. Got it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anton.
Cassetta Blanks Jackson and Carolyn Blanks Mays.
I'm Carolyn Blanks Mays, 1103 Antwerp Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36605. And I'm here today because I'm just enraged, you know, how we are prioritizing what we are about to go and do. I'm hearing about closing down Lad Stadium. I'm hearing about you want to build a new airport. It's, you know, it's in the process. Lad Stadium is a symbol in the black community. That's the only place that we have ever had college events, which was closed. We can't have the classic anymore, which was wrong. This is where all of us, they have different blues festivals, all kinds of things. So if you close this down, where are the black community going to go? Because we should not going way out to South Alabama. Okay, if we going to get up all this money, what my problem is, why you can't get that same money up for things that mean something like the sanitation workers? I don't feel that we gonna, that black community is going to stand by and allow this council or any other governing body to begin to do all these different projects with money that's coming in from our community because the office of managing budget says that 50% of the consumer is the black community. That's trees of dollars, which mean that we are really running an economy almost by one race. So as myself, I know I'm going to work very hard to make sure that that stadium is not torn down. We can't tear that down because that's all we had. If you going to spend some money, you need to get a new fleet of garbage trucks. You need to give our sanitation workers job security. You need to give them a proper raise. Do you not know that 50 years ago when Dr. King was killed, he was, he was fighting for the garbage workers? People that's been disrespected all this time? And we going to sit, you think we going to sit by and allow you to build a whole new stadium out there, which we don't need, and a new airport, which we already have, but yet our sanitation workers are being disrespected? We are not going to stand by and allow such. We never will. We never will allow that because what my idea and what my thinking is, if you say you're going to go ahead and do that anyway over our, you know, disagreement, we're going to make sure you don't have no money paid for it because you see what my shirt said. And we going to work toward it. Now, I know people get it, gives about that, but me and my sister wore them shirts about boycott and that old election, but I don't see Hillary Clinton up in there. Oh, we are trench people and we going to work. You are not going to close that stadium down. You going to restore it or do what you got to do. And if you going to do anything with money, why don't you start to restoring our black neighborhoods? See, I always hear Mayor Simpson talking about, ooh, Mobile just moving forward and moving forward, but you got all these black neighborhoods, it's dilapidated houses. How you moving forward? That means that we are not equal citizens and we don't have equal access to capital. That's what that means, but yet we spending money. We paying out everything that, more than everybody else is, but we don't get nothing for our neighborhood. And then you going to go and you say we need a new airport and we need a new stadium. No, we are not going to stand by and allow you to put our money into such foolishness. That is foolishness. That is not only just foolish, to me, it's pure evil. You going to take everything from our community? Airbus, once all of that, our, our community ran, all of us ran out of our neighborhood because that's what's going on. Once all that's done, we won't have a neighborhood. They're going to close down Wiz, just like they tried closing down Matisse. Everything going to be gone. Our neighborhood is going to be gone and everybody else going to take it over. And that is wrong, but we will not stand by and allow it happen. If you go ahead with this vote and do just what y'all always do, because you know, we still in slavery, we still don't make no decision, y'all just get in these rooms and just do whatever you want to do. We already know you going to do it, but we in the black community going to make sure you don't have one copper penny to take care of it because it's got to be taken care of. It's got to be taken care of. And just like you are blacking in our neighborhood, we want to make sure that our mall is blacking too. Because see, this is a fight. This is a serious fight. This is serious about our community. We are tired or we don't have no say-so over nothing and our black politicians sitting down up in here and they don't even support us. They don't even support us.
Your time, your time is expired.
My time might be expired, but it's still wrong if y'all sit there and vote on this issue.
Your time, your time has expired. Your time has expired. Thank you. There's a community meeting at Williamson on June, I mean, on July the 23rd at 6:00 P.M. No decision has been made, Ms. Blanks. And I'm telling you that as your representative. No decision, at least from my office, has been made relative to the South Alabama idea. And that's one of the reasons why we're having the community meeting so that you can come out because 98.8% of what you referenced were items and initiatives initiated by Mayor Sandy Simpson. Mayor Simpson is out of the country and so, but he will be at that community meeting on Ju, July the 23rd at 6:00 P.M. You need to come and let the mayor hear exactly how you feel about his initiatives because those initiatives were not started by this council. So on July the 23rd at Williamson High School, the same high school you referenced about them wanting to close. In auditorium at 6:00 P.M., please show up. You and your sister too. Please show up and please ask, answer, ask and get answers from Mayor Simpson, President Waltrip. Wait, wait a minute, your time, your time is up. You, you can have a seat, Ms. Blanks. I'm just making comments. You can have a seat.
Well, I don't want to finish.
I'm not ready to finish. You can have a seat, then I'll finish. Please have a seat. Because it's, it's not, I didn't go back and forth with you during your presentation. I'm looking for the same respect. On July the 23rd at 6:00 P.M., it will be the community meeting. Any questions, concerns, observations that you want me to know as your representative, Mayor Simpson to know as your council, your mayor rather, and I'm sure several of my colleagues will also be there because we're intentionally not making a backroom decision. We're intentionally being transparent and being open so that everyone understands. Ms. Anton, Ms. Anton, pardon me. We are intentionally being transparent so citizens in our communities can understand the feedback and what's going into the decision we're going to have to make. So thank you again for coming down today, Ms. Blanks and Ms. Anton.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Williams.
I just want to make sure that everyone knows the absolute facts and they are this. I've always supported the HBCU Classic Games. They are not going to discontinue. We are playing one this year in the city of Mobile at Lad Stadium. That is in its final details and if I have anything to do with it, HBCU Classic Football Games will continue in Mobile, Alabama, for as long as I'm here and can have anything to do with it. Thank you.
And just to add, two weeks ago, this council voted to give $25,000 worth of funding toward the HBCU Classic that will take place in September. We had one last year. We had one the year before. Danny Cordy is here from the Sports Authority. He can attest to all of that. So some of the rhetoric that we're hearing is just simply untrue and unfounded and frankly unnecessary when the facts are clear for everyone to see. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Morning.
Eddie Erby, 1116 Richard Road, Mobile, Alabama, 366018. I'm here very briefly, I come before you as the president of the 92nd Division Buffalo Soldiers Association of World War II. And it's not to criticize, it's to ask for help again, especially from your district Vice President Manzi. I have, first of all, let us give a shout out to the Mobile Garbage and Trash. Ever since you worked with them some time ago, we have no problem when we clean up the cemetery now of those guys coming and picking it up. So it's on a regular basis. Thank you for that. The other part that we are getting is we decided to stop doing the cleaning during the summertime because it is extremely dangerous back there. We go back, we're armed anyway, but you know, we don't want to try to run up and down the road that's trying to. road that trying shooting at snakes, so we just decided to let it go until the fall, while we'll go back with the fire department, do some controlled burning, and this time we would go beyond the area that we have gone back past Mr. Schu's church. Also, we have also contacted Alabama Power. Some of those oak trees that sit on the sidewalk, that's uprooting those graves, Alabama Power has sent their engineers over there to look at them to have those removed. Won't cost us anything. Also, interim Vice President Manzi, if you would please, we'd like for you as soon as possible to set up a meeting. This is part of my crew. I have a newspaper here, I'm going to leave for you and one for the city council. The Call News did a feature story on us last Wednesday, and it, they were very, very straightforward with it. We didn't try to disrespect the city anything, we don't know what we're doing, all we want to do was save the cemetery, the military part of the cemetery. However, since we've done that, there have been a lot of people there coming to do what they're supposed to be doing in the first place, let's take care of their own. So the streets is cleared, the things are there, but I have a little sidebar here, Vice President Manzi, can you share some information on the African American Museum and Arts? We had a retired police officer here last week who buried her mother from the Shambreaker family, the lady was a hundred and one years old. And she wanted to know where was the, she came by the African American Museum, it was closed. I said, well, it's been closed for two years. They, they went in to do some renovations, nothing happened, we don't know what's happened. General Cooper's uniform, as well as some other things, are hanging in there deteriorating, and that's not right. So when you can, so you find out why it's closed and let us know about it, so we'll know what to tell people when they come to us and see us at the cemetery. Also, we, one of the things that disturbs us about the cemetery is that if nothing isn't done about that place, we are afraid the same things is gonna happen to it that happened to the Creole Cemetery. Most of you may not know, and we're trying to investigate to see if it's true, but we have been told that the Mobile Paper Board sits right on top of the Creole Cemetery. And if we aren't careful, there'll be somebody coming here with a whole lot of money wanna do the same thing here, they just bulldoze the place, put something else on there and destroy all that history. We have civil rights people and icons in there, we have military people in there, and all we wanna do is, is make it a part of the community. There's a plaque in front of the cemetery down on Anne and Virginia Street, there's a plaque in front of the African Town Cemetery, there's a plaque in front of the Catholic Cemetery on Martin Luther King. There is nothing but that cardboard, well, that wooden board in front of the Oaklawn Cemetery. So we'd like for you at your earliest convenience, this is part of my staff here, it'll be about six or seven of us, that we can sit down and do what we need to do to save that cemetery.
Mr. Erby, I don't mind meeting with you and your staff, there'll be very little I'm gonna be able to offer because it's not a city-owned property. It's gonna continue to take the initiative of individuals, great individuals like yourself and your staff members to show interest in the cemetery. The city does not own one inch of property in Oaklawn Cemetery. And every way we could have maneuvered to try to ensure that city workers could go and, and make repairs there and, and keep it up, has all been found unlawful. And so it's gonna continue, each plot is owned by a family member. So it's each family member's responsibility to take care of that cemetery.
Yeah, well, I would.
Wait a minute, Mr. Erby, your time up. So I'm willing to meet with you, I'm willing to meet with your staff members, but I don't want unrealistic expectations as to what my office will be able to do in order to perpetuate the cleaning up of that cemetery. It's gonna have to be a continual community effort unless the laws change at this point. So I'm willing, I'm willing to meet with you, not, not against that at all, but the answer to the problem is a complex answer, because I wanna see it maintained as well. I realize the historical nature of the cemetery.
What about the sidewalks? The sidewalks belong to the city, right?
Yes.
They do.
Yes.
Now, that's part of the sidewalk. Mr. Erby, your time has expired. Let's set the meeting, you came and asked for an audience with me. I've agreed to give you that. We can discuss sidewalks and anything else at that meeting.
I have a question.
Mrs. Rich?
Has your group gone to see the State Historical Commission? Because if the cemetery, they might look into it for a marker or placement. Have you gone up to Montgomery or spoken to anybody in that commission? I think they might be able.
Yes, we have, yes. Yeah, we're working with them.
Good, because they can be very helpful as far as a marker.
The marker, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they would pay necessarily for it, but you know, that might.
We have to come up with the money, but the marker.
Is that what they told you, basically? But did they designate it as a historical?
Not yet, we're working on it.
Okay, good, good.
Mr. Davis?
Great.
Mr. Erby, has, has this group of yours with respect to the cemetery thought of forming a, a nonprofit corporation and gaining a tax-exempt number for the preservation of the cemetery? Because that would allow you to accept charitable contributions, which would, might allow you to build up a fund over time where the, where the, where the revenues from the fund could be used to maintain the cemetery. In my mind, that, that would, that would be one of your best, one of your best long-term paths to achieving the, the maintenance of the cemetery.
Yes, sir, that's one of the things we'd like to do when we sit down and discuss with Mr. Manzi. You know, not to inform him, but to let him know that we're gonna do, that's the long term. You know, this was not on our radar. We went in there to find a half dozen soldiers, we got up to almost seven hundred.
Wow.
And we know, that's just the first part. We know there's another six or seven hundred behind what we've already cleaned up, so it's, it's, like you say, it's gonna be a long-term thing, but you know, I will, you know, we just received a deed to our property on Wilson Avenue for the Davis McFadden Veterans Memorial Park. So you know, we, we trying to move, but.
But you see, a separate corporation dedicated to maintaining the cemetery that could take charitable donations would really allow you to get funding from a number of different sources that are unavailable to you at this point.
Does your, when you represent the Buffalo Soldiers, are they a 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
Because you can have an umbrella, and the mission, when you've set up the 501(c), could include cemetery, you know, so that you're doing it and you're helping the other groups as well.
Well, that's what we did with the Davis McFadden Veterans Memorial Park, we have a 501(c)(3) for it, you know, but that was, it refers just under the umbrella of the Buffalo Soldiers. But we have a separate 501(c)(3) specifically for Davis McFadden Park, so yeah, you're right, maybe we should get this, it's just that, my goodness, that is a big, big project, so.
Well, you're a man.
As a volunteer, so if.
You are a man that conquers big projects. I believe you can do it, Mr. Eddie Erby.
Doing great.
And I look forward to meeting with you, however I can be helpful with sidewalks and things of that nature, I'm willing to work with you all on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Ordinance is held over. Fifty-two zero one five, amend chapter fifty-two of the Mobile City Code pertaining to boarding standards hazard trees and tree limbs and updated weed abatement fees.
Move to hold over two weeks.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am staying.
Sixty-five zero one eight, amend sections fifty-seven dash thirty-six and section thirty-nine dash seventy-seven of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Mobile, Alabama, to prohibit the sale, use, or possession of plastic confetti or serpentine.
Move to table.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am staying.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, sixty-four zero one nine.
By council rules, this will lay over one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-three four eight two through sixty-four nine six.
Move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions zero-three four eight two through six zero four nine six.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-three four eight two, appoint Elaine Gallow to the Mobile City County Youth Council, zero-three four eight three, reappoint Scott Peach to the Code's Advisory Committee, thirty-one four eight four, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive funding from the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces Program.
So moved. Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-four eight five, declare, declare the, forty-four eight five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, forty-ninety, forty-ninety-two, are declaring the structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished, three thirteen, Lincoln Boulevard, five fifty Cedar Avenue, five seventy-two Westwood Street, five seventy-three Westwood Street, six twenty-one Dr. Thomas Avenue, also known as six eleven Stenrod Road, forty, four-nine D is seven twelve Johnston Avenue, and six oh seven Wickerby Street.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I respect.
Forty-four nine one, declare the structure at ten twelve Saint Francis Street, a public nuisance and order it demolished.
We're gonna table.
I took that one separate.
What, we're gonna table this one?
We're tabling it so it can be written differently.
Right. Move to table.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I am staying.
Okay. Fifty-eight four nine three, authorize removal of weeds, group fifteen eighty-one, sixty-four nine four, determine expenditure of discretionary funds for contribution to New Image for Youth on the winning side serves a public purpose and approved payment, sixty-four nine five, determine expenditure of discretionary funds for contributions to the Mobile Regional Senior Community Center Foundation serves a public purpose and approved payment, sixty-four nine six, approve award of special bonus to the Office of the Month as part of the Mayor's Incentive Program.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion is second, any discussion?
Yes, I'll be brief. On sixty-four nine five, I'd like to thank Commissioner Hudson for working with my office and for the community foundation that supports the Connie Hudson Senior Center. There's a wonderful landscaping project going on, and you'll see a lot of new products out there and highlighting the center. And again, this is something that is really a joint effort, and I thank everyone who's been involved and look forward to that beautification of the center. Thank you.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I respect.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-nine four nine eight through twenty-one five hundred.
By council rules, these resolutions will hold over for one week.
Announcements.
Mr. Williams?
None, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
None, thank you.
Mrs. Rich?
None.
Wow, let's see. Mrs. Gregory?
Well, gosh, I feel like I'm under pressure here.
No, go ahead.
You have a lot of time.
Yeah, just a couple of things. This coming Saturday, beginning at ten o'clock, the Mobile Terrace Community will hold their annual back-to-school. We call it a bash, basically we are giving out school supplies to all the children in the neighborhood. We'll be out at McCann's Chavers Park, and I do wanna make sure that everything is ready to go at the park. I've been in touch with Dan Otto about power washing it, I just wanna make sure everything is ready, grass is cut and all that good stuff. But we'll be there beginning at ten o'clock on Saturday. Also, just want to remind everybody about market in the park at Loretta Park on Old Shell Road. We're starting to wind down, it only runs through the end of July on Thursdays from three until six, so get on out there to get all of your vegetables, fruit, flowers, arts and crafts before they pack it in for another season. And also, a big shout out to everyone at the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, in particular the union members who have been out power washing at Langen Park, and we are now preparing to paint the pavilions at Langen. It's hot and dirty work, but they are moving forward very quickly to get these pavilions painted using volunteer help, and if anybody wants to come out and help, you know, please feel free to do so. Just a reminder, though, they will be working during the week, and they'll be doing about two pavilions at a time, and so those pavilions will be closed down for painting, but we'll have notices and tape up to remind everybody that those pavilions are closed. But again, a big shout out to those folks who are volunteering their time to do this work in the city, and certainly, I'm excited because it's in my district. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
I just wanna put emphasis on our community meeting, July the 23rd, Williamson High School, 6:00 P.M. The subject will be Lad Stadium. I know that there have been individuals throughout the community working on a community survey, there's been a link that's been disseminated relative to that same survey. Please provide the feedback that's been requested of you, and I'm asking that all interested persons, particularly those who live in the vicinity of Lad Stadium, the Maysville, the Linekoff Communities, we're looking for strong attendance that night. We don't want, and I'm stressing again, we don't want this built-up audience of USA students. If we get there Monday and there's three hundred, four hundred USA students, I'm gonna dismiss the meeting, because we've already heard that perspective. We wanna hear from the residents that live in the vicinity of Lad Stadium and other interested citizens relative to how do we move forward with what's been put before this council. Any announcements from the administration? Any further announcements?
Yes, I need, and I apologize.
That's okay.
I wouldn't have given Ms. Gregory so much time, I'm just kidding. I forgot to mention that this afternoon at one o'clock, there is a Public Safety Committee meeting on the ninth floor to discuss the rollback of the PJ and the mayor's initiative on that particular issue. So it's open to the public, of course, and looking forward to that meeting of the Public Safety Committee, one o'clock on the ninth floor. Thank you.
Your motion?
So moved.
Probably motion is second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourn.